And so forth, but I will go ahead since I am late. Call the meeting to order and we will begin by reading the Freedom of Information Act statement and of course with South Connor Freedom of Information Act, section thirty, forty, eighty E., South Connor Code nineteen eighty-seven amended. All the meeting and the meeting area has been notified of the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. We will begin with a prayer, God, Mr. Govan, followed by the pledge.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to meet, to discuss the business of this district as well being to have this meeting be held in a manner that will be fitting to you as well to us, in your name, amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will ask for a change here. I would like to prove the agenda, prove the agenda with the following changes. I would like to move the bus driver options and exchange that with the number three. That's a notice and items for review and discussion. It will begin bus drivers first, miscellaneous, and then test score analysis, followed by item five, executive session. Have a motion approved.
Second, all in favor, I oppose likewise.
Let's carry it. So, we'll begin. First item on the agenda, so that we can get our bus folks out. We'll let Jeff go first.
All right, Chairman Morpheus, members of the board, want to talk to you just about some ideas that we're working on with bus drivers right now. We have a significant shortage. We continue to have a shortage. It's not just only in the county, it's across the state that we are having trouble getting bus drivers. And I have Mr. Thomas with us, Mr. Johnson here as well, to talk through some different ideas and some of our other folks with us, some of our bus managers that we have, depot managers that we have, just to talk through some of the issues that we've been having trying to attract, some of the ideas that we have to hopefully retain some folks and attract some folks to bus driving positions. So with that said, Mr. Thomas, about how many bus drivers are we shy at the moment?
About eighteen to nineteen.
How is that relative to previous two years roughly on the market?
It's up and down the past two years, always around that fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
So this is common?
Yes.
It's just ongoing, it makes it harder and harder every year though.
Yes, sir. The economy has changed, so the people who want jobs have jobs, so the pickings are real slim. And just, and then just retaining the people who we have is getting tough.
And the quality of what you're...
Quality of people, we just don't want bodies.
So we're just doing double routes now and make up everything?
Yes, sir. I have a lot of routes that are doubled up, that buses running, dropping and going right back out to pick up again.
So we're, we're, kids are up earlier, getting home later?
They get, they're up at the same time, it's just getting home a little bit later. All of the supervisors are out driving, all of the clerks are out driving, my secretary is out driving. I drove a field trip this morning and it's just...
Care with?
I'm kidding. Mr. Thomas, can you introduce the supervisors that are with you as well?
I have Mr. Hooks, he's the Darnison area supervisor, Mr. Simon is the Lamar area supervisor.
Thank y'all for being here with us and appreciate what you do. I know you're trying to piece it together on a daily basis and it changes a lot, so some of the ideas we've been keeping around is how to, you know, to try to get some more folks into forces. And one of the things that's come up that we want to talk with you about, that a lot of districts are doing, is having what they call a dual position, which is classroom aide and bus driver. And this is a way to, a couple of things, there, whoever's in those roles winds up working more, so they're getting more money, they're making more money. Nine times out of ten, they wind up making overtime because it extends past the eight hours of the day. And so I know a lot of districts have moved towards this or have been doing it for a while. And it's one thing we thought about talking to our current folks that we have to see if there would be an interest for them to be able to make some more money. For example, any of the aides that we have, if we can get them certified with a CDL license, it's more to allow them to drive a route in the morning and the afternoon. Also, as we hire new positions, we can add the dual position bus driver, classroom aide, so yes, Mr. President?
Given that lawsuit several years ago, that, you know, if bus drivers are worth over, our custodians for that matter, then you had to pay them time and a half because, you know, we ran it.
That's correct.
So how is that gonna impact, I mean, if we do, if we let, your suggestion, that we would have to pay them time and a half, is that correct?
You would, for the overtime they have. So anything over forty hours a week is what you would have to do. So right now, our aides are on a thirty-seven point five hour a week, and so let's say they had an hour route in the morning, an hour route in the afternoon, because you could use your shorter routes for your classroom aides, you could use your longer routes for your full-time bus drivers, is the way you would structure that. And so two hours every day, times five, that's ten hours, on top of the thirty-seven point five, you'd be up about forty-seven point five, so you pay seven and a half hours, time and a half for overtime. But again, you'd be having bus drivers uncovering the routes.
I think the, we sort of did something like this some years ago, but it was so tedious, we were gonna pay overtime based on the scenario. And I guess, in this case, the overtime coming out of the bus folks. That, that, that the issue?
As far as who pays for it? Yeah, it would, it would be a general fund, it would be a general fund expense, I mean, it'd be, it'd be a higher cost for the district. But just like right now, we're eighteen bus drivers down, so that's eighteen salaries we're not paying right now until we get somebody to fill it, so, you know, it's, it's gonna cost you one way or another. And so if you can, to me, if you've got people that are willing to do it, I'd rather reward them to do it, than have them make more money, even have them make the overtime and give them the options of that, so.
The other question I guess was, I think in, I saw something, I believe in the application process, that if a person agreed to drive a bus or went through CDL in Dallington as a bus driver, they, they had to agree to a year of employment, is that correct? Because they can actually get a CDL act and then walk away? Yeah, that's a positive problem, too.
We just don't have people coming in, that's the thing.
We're not with CDLs right now, where do I come in?
We don't have people coming in. We have, we'll have a class and maybe have twenty in a class, but then maybe one or two will finish everything after training.
All right, so I guess my question, one of my questions is, we're not having the applicants, and you're looking at going in and soliciting someone already in the district to see if they wanna drive, because, or do you think that by offering these hours, that will attract more to drive the buses?
Both.
Okay.
So, so what you, what you do is you go to your current base and, and say, would you be interested in making some more money?
All right, you're talking about going to your, okay, your current base, not bus driver, because what, bus driver's always here, oh, I want to work some more, come in here and do whatever these other jobs are. I think you're gonna be better off trying to fill those vacant positions by looking for people already on staff, is what you're saying?
That's right.
If the CDL had come out, you'd make more money.
And then as those positions come open, so as, as we have vacancies come open for aides, you advertise them as a bus driver aide position.
Do we know, have we had any conversations with those other areas where they would have that availability of people, if they have an interest in that?
We wanted to talk to y'all about it before we started talking to our folks. We wanted to at least mention that this is our thoughts.
If they even have any desire, I, what, are we talking about aides? We talking about, what do we talk, who are we talking about, our candidates? Who's our target market?
Well, it, you know, ideally classroom aides, attendance clerks, I mean, you could have custodians, you have...
That's my question, well, how much time does a custodian get now? Are they full-time?
Yep.
So, there is a, of a time. Originally when Dr. Dawson talked, and there was opportunity for people, I thought that we had some people that weren't working full, weren't full-time.
There were some.
And then you could...
I think there's one young lady, I guess I shouldn't call her a lady, but she's been doing it since it started, and I guess I can't, Charlie used to do it.
Or could we fill some places, like we said, we had some landscaping issues, our grounds folks, where's, he's not here tonight.
We do have those positions.
Sir?
We do have those positions.
So there were grounds folks we couldn't fill, well, I wonder if we, I don't know, if we could use a bus driver to do some grounds work? I mean, I don't know, I'm just thinking here, who, I just, I worry with that target, do we have a market we're targeting and is there a available group of population?
So, so I can tell you from my former experiences, it was mandatory, all aide positions drove buses in my former district. And so every position that was advertised, every position that was out there, it was you would receive your CDL within ninety days of being on the job.
Oh, we're gonna get rid of it, then we got those vacancies we got to fill up.
But, but the benefit, people quickly realized is you can make a lot more money. In those dual positions, you can earn a lot of money.
And PNA is cutting back a lot, because I knew somebody on the board...
I thought they were picking up some, I heard Benisfield talking about picking up some routes.
But I know somebody on the board, they said they couldn't back because they were asking me, they were talking to me about the salary for the new person that's coming because the other guy agreed with it. And they were saying, and he started with like a hundred and something, or whatever it was, and I was raining down at the number of people that were going in.
Jamie, if you go back, if you think back to when we first came on this board, and some years while we were on this board, we did exactly what he's talking about doing now. We cut it out when, I think in oh-eight, I believe it was, when, when we had the, the economy crisis. We, we were doing that before, because we had a lot of custodians, old people who were driving buses as well, and that's when we cut, that's when we cut it out, and we have never gone back to it.
All right, and then I pose another challenge in, in the industry in general, CDL, if you got a CDL, you can drive a transfer truck, right?
Yeah.
You know what they're paying for new people coming out? I've got trucking companies that have fifteen, twenty trucks on the lot, that's capital sitting there not earning a dime, they can't find drivers. They're trying to do their classes on-site instead of having to send them to these centralized places, but there's no one to train. So I, I fear, I, I hope this works, but I'm just thinking, I'm gonna come up here and work and make whatever we pay here, or I'm gonna jump on the road and that trucking guy's gonna pay me fifty thousand, sixty thousand dollars a year to go drive a truck, and it's not even my truck. And following, I just, we get real challenges here. I like the idea, we have to try everything. So if you guys are in for it, if y'all think it's an option, it's something that might work, I don't even need any kind of board approval, we gotta make some decisions, because we gotta have drivers without question.
But I think too, Jamie, at this point, you try, because the worst scenario is if you don't try, you know you're not...
We're not getting anywhere right now.
Right.
Well, one thing too, we're already paying these people, they're already on, they're getting insurance and benefits and all that, so we're not really adding anything there, so that's a saving, you know, what?
Yes, sir.
Are we adding a point of liability pertaining to overworking our drivers and that kind of thing, you know, and that become an issue when something go wrong?
Those that wanna work, there's opportunities for them to work, and some of them will say, no, I don't want field trip, and no, I don't want this extra run, but for those who wanna work, there's plenty of opportunities for them.
And is there any cutoff on having hours that you do behind the wheel?
Mr. Govan?
Well, I think, kind of, yeah, but kind of it comes over that, is you know, sometimes with your truck drivers, there's, there's a, there's a...
Right.
Time for them to take a break, I think that's just for them.
They don't have, we shouldn't have any drivers driving more than three hours in the morning, and maybe three hours in the evening with a break, and you have a five-hour break in between.
So that's not...
Now, we drive in the morning, they go home, and they come back in the afternoon, right?
Some of them, some of them stay at office all day because they're running mid-days, they're running DCIT route.
Right, but if I'm a truck, if I'm a bus driver, in theory though, I don't get paid all day, I just pay for the time I drive.
Right, what you work.
All right, now, we went over this before, y'all gave me the reason, I think. Thank you for goodness, Ralph, with our irresponsible children, sorry. Children, remember how when we went to school, when I went to school, the kids drove the buses? Now what happened with laws on that?
Age.
But did that change, so my question is, is that allowed, or that not allowed?
CDL changed, we gotta have so many out on years of experience driving a car.
All right, then how about this, have we talked about or thought about contacting, like Tech, Darnum County, or whatever, Darnison, March, Darnum Tech, and trying to solicit drive while they're in school, kids that are going to school, has money, if I'm saying as a child, money doesn't interfere with school?
I sent some stuff to them, and one of the guys said that he was gonna get back with me and reach back out to them, but he never reached back out to them, I'm not sure of his name.
I just think, I picture some of my girls' friends and stuff, we're talking about going to Tech, they want money, doesn't interfere with school, you go to full school time, school full-time and drive a bus. Boom, up in the morning, bam, you're gone, you're at school all day long, you pick them back up, get your classes between these areas. I'm, I'm just trying to think out of the box here, kids that want money but are responsible, because they've been driving, they're responsible enough, know they want a job and still go to school, I'm just trying to reach out and see if there's some other options there. But without a doubt, this is a direction, like Dr. Dawson said, we gotta try.
What's the minimum age for a bus driver?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
So another thought that we had is, our bus drivers are pretty much full-time employees right now, with benefits, most of them are, is that, is that correct, Tom? We've thought about maybe trying a part-time driving position, which would be under thirty hours, but, but increase the hourly rate, otherwise you're not getting benefits because it's a part-time job, but some folks might be able to drive part-time because they're getting benefits from another job.
Or from a spouse.
Or from a spouse.
You know, that is a great idea, because again, you, we attract people at our bank part-time, but we don't need them, we need them during peak periods, but they like to see that's what's in my pocket, they like to see that dollar mark go up, they don't understand the cost of benefits to the company, so that doesn't mean anything, so you show them, you know, a dollar an hour relative to five dollars an hour, I'm going for five dollars an hour, the part-time might be...
We used to have like, what'd you call them, hairdressers, that, you know, the customers, they can move their customers or clients, whatever you wanna call them, and we used to have those people, because I think they're still comfortable driving, yeah, that's what they do, and then...
I really like the idea of soliciting the part-time...
And you can increase, like a lot of districts, we've been kinda polling a few districts and, you know, fifteen dollars an hour, for example, you know, I'm just saying that as a possibility, not saying that, but that's what a lot of districts are paying, you know, bus drivers. And if you said, you know, part-time, you work fifteen dollars an hour, full-time with benefits, it's not fifteen dollars an hour. But you might be able to attract people looking for the money, you know, for short-term.
Have we agreed to do this? Because I kinda like, well, just go ahead and let Dr. New go over the plan, and just high up and get back with us, unless it doesn't necessarily have to be, and just go to the plan and, and go ahead and move forward, because, I, the real, I can allocate to it is, if we got these openings and we need to do something, to be with it, and we can keep around all night, but at the end of the day, we still gotta do something. But can we agree to let Dr. New go ahead and go over the...
No, I agree, and I really like, the, the part-time was a winner for us. They love that increased money, they didn't pay attention to benefits or concern with that.
And, you know, there's that magic level of when you can start grabbing people from other areas to other districts.
Some fall under their parents, and again, I still say the students, if, they're often, not our students, but the Tech students who are looking for...
And that's the reason why the students are...
Correct, correct, it's covered right there. They're taking advantage of college, these kids are, these kids are from out of town, they're coming here, I, I see these kids waiting on tables at night, great personalities, they wanna work, they wanna do good, I'm like, you're not from here, are you? And no, I just, but I wanna make money, but I'm in wrestling, so and so, and that's a great idea, I think we should solicit the college and say, listen, if you've got opening for part-time drivers before and after school.
Okay, good.
I think it is, I know it's some stuff, and the teachers were driving before too.
Well, and that, and that's another thing that's come up, is that we, we, I think we've actually had Mr. Johnson, some, some teachers ask about driving a bus, and, and you know, so, you know, my first reaction was, well, if you take anybody who will drive a bus, but then you gotta start thinking through that, what time does a teacher need to be there in the morning, and what time do they need to be with the kids until, so we'd have to find unique situations where, you know, the schedule would work out to allow them to do that. But let's say they had, let's say they were a high school teacher and they had first block open, they may be able to drive a morning bus route, or at the very least, you know, field trips and stuff, that's one of the big issues we're having, is being able to take field trips, because we gotta, our regular bus drivers, we gotta get them back in time to get to the elementary schools, and so you can't really be on a field trip that long if your normal bus driver's driving the field trip, and they gotta be back so early, so, you know, that is something we've discussed about teachers, I think that's something that might have been done in the past.
And you open up, you're right, across sports, teaching, anything, but again, it's gotta work within the schedule, so we don't sacrifice elsewhere.
That's right.
Down to you, man.
So we wanted to bring these ideas, just to let y'all know, this is what we're working on and looking at, wanted to run it by you before we start going out there and, and checking in with folks and seeing if it would be, open it down, just so y'all know, when they, when they say, hey, I understand, we might be able to make a little bit more money, so that's the plan. Mr. Johnson, anything else you can think of on that front?
I think we did all things.
I, I have a question. You're talking about, if you're talking about mixing jobs, are you, if our bus drivers are paid X an hour, but our aides are paying, paid Y an hour, how are you gonna make adjustments to that?
So you, they clock in and...
And, and, let me just, and extend this, then also, if you're talking about overtime, where do the overtime hours come? Do they come basically the bus, the higher or the lower salary?
So you don't wanna penalize anybody, first of all, and, you know, two, several different ways you can handle it. I've actually done a blended rate in the past, where you take the two and you blend it together, and that's the rate they make, and so any overtime is at that rate, any regular hours is at that rate.
I, I'm with one, because things are so funny, I mean, people, lawyers, everything else, I would like to run that by, and make sure we're doing it right.
Well, the way we're currently doing it is, they clock in as a bus driver at a certain rate, or they clock in as an aide at a certain rate, so you can clock in and clock out.
I'm good with that, it's just overtime, how do we, how do we fare, I mean, I think if you're driving, how do you say, did I get overtime in with this, or overtime in with that? Now, again, I got eighteen hours here, and I got twenty-four hours over here, twenty-two hours over here, so the two hours, you, you...
The bus job is what pushes them over in overtime. If they weren't doing the bus driver's job, they would never...
This just makes sure we're paying overtime.
He's done it.
But there, but, but that's a good question, you do have to track the hours for, you know, federal law, you have to be able to, fair labor standards, you have to be able to track the separate hours that they're working, so they clock in and they clock out.
I just would not, again, we have been called in several other places, whether it be my own work or someone else's work, we have seen that they've come back on them because over five years, you've been doing it this way, well, that's what you've always done, and you haven't ever been called out, because you haven't been called out, doesn't make it wrong, so I just be cautious with that, make sure we cover ourselves, but I'm all for it.
Yeah, he's so dope, since they, their work is hazardous, and then when they go up front and do something, then they're paying with a different rate.
But, but yeah, I'm cool with that part, it's just when you have overtime, where you attribute the overtime, which pay do you attribute to the overtime?
Yeah, no, but I mean, since he's done it, obviously, you know, he understands the law.
But we, we'll start looking at these options, and again, we'll keep y'all posted on it, but...
This is off the subject, sort of, of buses. When you go on a field trip or athletic team goes off somewhere, is a coach required to go, or can, as long as a bus driver's there, is a school bus driver insufficient, do they go, are there a number of chaperones, or a number of coaches, a number of, that have to go, is there any policy on that or anything?
You usually try to get the coach to stay with that team.
But don't have to, as long as you got a, a bus driver who's employed by the district, you're okay.
Rather have the coach, because that bus driver may not even know who they're riding.
And the kids don't have a clue who that is.
And it costs them money. Whereas a coach...
No, 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 I'm just saying, I'm just saying, say a group was taken down to, taken out to Chester for a ballgame, and some of the kids went home, but their parents went off, but the rest of them go on the bus, they're going home, well, the coach didn't get on either, but the bus driver did. Is there, is that coach required to ride back with the students?
I would rather have the coach ride.
I know, I would rather, but I didn't know if we had a policy that stated...
I hope that there's a true policy.
But if, if you're coaching a team...
You need to be with your team.
Yeah, I know, it's just, we have, we have smaller teams, we have tennis teams, we have golf, we have cross country, we have cheerleading.
If you're coaching a team, you ought to be with your kids.
I'm, I'm with you, but I'm just letting you know, sometimes they allow them, the district has got a policy where we allow you to sign out, which I'm, I'm all good with that, if a parent signs it with a coach, everyone authorized, it's good. But say we went down with twenty kids on the bus, and we only got eight going back, and the bus driver checks back, the coach decides he's gonna ride with someone, so I just, I just wanna...
Another thing you gotta be careful with, with that, is making sure, once we get back to the site, that a parent or guardian is there, somebody's...
And that bus driver's not gonna sit there and stay with, it's not their job.
Exactly, that bus driver's not gonna stay there, because they're gonna take the bus back to the transportation park.
That's not just, well, I need help.
I, I would, I would always want a coach, or an assistant coach, that is present.
That knows the kids.
I, I can't imagine, I mean, if, if there's not a protocol, we'll check on that.
But can you imagine a band reacting like, oh, with his band?
I cannot.
That would be, we'd fire him or that.
All right, yes.
Yeah, one last thing, the, the bus driver is on, it gets a pay cycle, all right?
What do you mean?
They, they don't, they're not doing the whole year, they break off in the summer.
Yeah, they only pay for what they work, a hundred and eighty days.
Right. So you're asking how would that work if we did the dual positions? The dual-position people get paid year-round, so they would get paid year-round. So all of the hours that they're working, regardless of whether they're a bus driver or an aide, they would be, they get twenty-four pay slots a year.
Yes, some district, and I'm not sure if we do this, it goes back to something Jamie just asked, are we requiring coaches to be CDL certified? You know, some districts make all their coaches CDL certified for that, for the same reason, because with games, because you couldn't, you couldn't pay for the overtime, so a lot of districts said, okay, you, you have to be certified, CDL certified, if you're gonna coach. And that's like, that's how I got that, because they made me do it.
I don't think they're made anymore, I think they say it's required, but they never, a lot of them won't finish their, it's like the other ones, they start, again, we have twenty in class and everybody still, they're just fizzled out, they don't complete the, all the training for it.
I think it's a good idea to, to require your coaches to have the CDL, and if they can't, then they better recruit somebody that's willing to drive for free on that bus, I mean, that, that, whether it's an assistant coach or whoever.
But then they used to, and the other question, that, that, if you say drive for free, you can't remember.
Coaches, all other duties?
You could do the coaches that way, but if it was a, a bus driver who was, let's say doing band, that bus driver has to be paid.
That's right, that's their normal job, that's their normal job, you gotta pay.
Right.
But if you're a coach, that's other, that's all other assigned duties. And, you know, I, I just, you know, I mean, I...
But that'd be something they wanna look at.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, guys, I appreciate it. You know, more, you good? Y'all can stick around, more than happy to stick around for this exciting stuff we're talking about, whatever, calling them as ladies. So our next item on the agenda, well, Ms. Lanes, yeah, go ahead. Ms. Lanes? So I guess that's anything we may have, is that correct?
No, I've got some other...
I'll spray that.
It is a work session, right?
Yeah.
I'm gonna let you all off that easy. Thank you, I appreciate it, thanks for being here.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Take a break.
No, I'm counting.
Okay.
I don't know if I was supposed to get my food now or something.
I got a party Saturday night, I don't see if they can borrow for the buses. We should purr our cams.
Yes, sir.
All right, are we back in session?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, just a minute.
All right, just miscellaneous items that have come up that usually I'll be able to at least give y'all an FYI on, it works sessions. The couple of construction items, the construction meeting that we were, that we had last Tuesday, and then a couple of days afterwards, I think y'all probably have heard about some water issues that we've had over the came. I think some of y'all have heard louder than others probably about some water issues. But again, with the contractor, I think we've had, three times we've had an issue, Mr. Johnson? And they were all fixed within forty-five minutes. The longest was forty-five minutes, the other prior to, I think, were thirty minutes, that they were down. So the last one that we had was last week, we were down for forty-five minutes, and then the school was backed up, but the city had issues, and that's what kinda caused some issues with some of the folks, you know, living around there. We had absolutely nothing to do with the city piece. And I think, you know, the frustration of the folks that live around there is the city needed to, you know, respond to it quicker.
I sent one to the city manager, I told him I have it.
Well, the thing is, on that side of town, it been elected quite a bit. Matter of fact, it goes over back to mail, when they come on, talking about it, the lines wasn't being flushed and a whole bunch of stuff. So on the east side of Dalton, it's not getting the attention that it should be. To what I'm concerned.
Yeah, I think the residents at first thought it made them on us, but actually it wasn't us, it was the city, and for them to having, you know, to take care of fixing it.
I thought, I thought today was coming to me, Christmas Thursday, I thought I had done an attraction on Tuesday, I thought she was coming to me to talk about another attraction, so she came and laid me out by the wall.
So we are continuing to monitor, and of course, at some point in time, we'll be past all of that, once we get all the site work done, for the most part, we should be past all of that.
And, you know, lift station or dragon feet.
So we, you know, that's one of the conversations that I had with our city folks, that they need to put in a list there.
Well, they actually have.
Well, they said, they said they contracted for four, I think is what I've heard.
They had somebody down there to do it, that had done it for the city before, and they got them some issues that had nothing to do with that, so they can't apply with that particular grant up to March. Now they're going after some E D H grant or something over there, and the likelihood of us qualifying for a slip run. So when they called me, I told them, y'all are smart, so you figure it out before I call D H.
Yeah, 'cause the answer I got from the city was that they supposedly had four, that they were, they were going to...
See, this one was a separate grant, we got the living, so rather than go ahead and do it, so when they called me, I told them, y'all are smart people, you agree, so you figure it out.
So we'll have to, you know, again, continue to ask and see, but I mean, that is correct, especially when there is... But I think we got bigger issues with the water mains too, so, sound like it at least. Anyways, that's it for construction at this point in time. The other topic that came up...
I thought we were talking about that, the highway problems.
I got that, great. There are two more things on construction, and I've mentioned in my board brief about the roads, I think. If y'all saw the email, that there's a chance we can apply for some grants for both the Hartsville area and Lamar area, that we're hoping that we might qualify for some grant money on that, that could certainly help offset what we talked about. And then the last thing from the construction meeting was that they're about to have a, they're about to put the committee together for selection, pre-selection of the G Cs, the general contractors that can bid on the project, and there is a spot for a board member on that committee. I'm not sure if there was a board member on the...
Yes, there is, Dr. Dawson and I.
So I think there's at least one spot, and there might be two, so we probably wanna at least see if there's one, and then an alternate, and it could be both that stay on the committee, from my understanding, but y'all need to think about that and decide who wants to be.
Yeah, 'cause they, they asked me because he was in my area.
I think it's good to have two bids.
So this is on which, Hartsville and Lamar, but this is for...
G C.
G C preselect.
I don't mind at all, I wanna do this with what we do all the time with our work, but that's the way of y'all, if y'all wanna position on a y'all role.
Yeah, that takes care of Hartsville and Lamar.
And this is for the separate, this will be a G C, they will act as a total G C separate without being sub, right?
The separate, the pre.
You're gonna find more available bidders, more realistic bidders, ones I pictured that were not work producing, that's where you get those inflate pricing, they're all excited about this.
Good, that's good. So we're doing the right thing?
Yes, according to them, and it gives you a lot, bigger pool to choose from, and local people as well.
And the other issue was bidding together separate and get a feel there.
Yeah, and I think it's an either or, is the way we...
What we're doing is giving them the option, this gives us prices and benefits, for double, then bid double. You can bid, you can bid either for, that's what it says. Now, how would they, I guess I'll need to ask this to them, tell them how they were looking to solicit those bids? Through a certain means, are they gonna, are they allowed to contact people, say, hey, can you bid? Let you know about the bidder?
Yeah, I mean, you can put ads out, you can call people, you can do anything to drum it up, and of course, there's a, there's a prebid, format that you go through that gives you certain points for this, certain points for this, so everybody will be rated on the same rubric that they'll use for preselect. And again, it's, I mean, it's a lot of information, like, I guess, Dr. Dawson, you went through it, you know how in-depth it is.
Yes.
You can cheat off though, the guy, they will.
So, but I think, you know, it would be good to have both of y'all represented on there. Again, along with district personnel, construction personnel, construction management personnel, so... All right. Ooh, couple other random topics. One thing we have been talking about, sporting events, we've been having some discussions about that recently. And Mr. Johnson and I have been talking to some of our principals about, for example, clear plastic bags. That's something that a lot of districts have started going to, that you only allow, you know, clear plastic bags to be brought into the stadiums or arenas, basketball games, and to help, you know, just be more transparent on what folks are coming in, into stadiums and into arenas with, so we've been starting to have those discussions. I think where at one time, there might have been more resistance to that, I think now, in this day and age, there seems to be folks more open to that. Just again, wanna let y'all know that if you, if somebody says, well, hey, I hear there are loads of plastic bags, no, we're talking about it, we're having discussions. You know, we've been having conversations with law enforcement, I've talked to parents, you know, we've talked to administrators, coaches, we're just trying to get as much input as possible, including from you all. You know, what you all think would be appropriate for our athletic functions. I know, go ahead.
Everybody who's a fan from anywhere else goes to any other major stadium, they're taking plastic, and there's society's element on them, and they're standard bags, I mean, so, I mean, I don't think that's a big shocker. So, and I don't personally say it does too much to ask.
We've been very fortunate that we have not had a real incident.
Right.
I mean, it's all been hearsay, and they've all proven not to, but you know, it's not to say it couldn't happen tomorrow. I just, we always have to err on the side of caution, it must take priority, I understand that, and I want that. I do know, though, that we have done so well with getting a family atmosphere at our functions, our crowds, and I'm gonna speak more across where events have happened, the crowds are out there, we take more people to away games than the hawks and the away teams bring to their home games. We, I like it, I wanna continue that, it's great revenue, but it's great atmosphere, it's about, it gives you ownership, so to speak. So when you look at what are the things we can do to make it safer, God, I'm indifferent on the plastic bag rate, but I think one of the big things, continue to allow it in environment, we can do this to families, right? If you wanna come to the game, watch the game, you don't have to sit and watch it in the stands. I was fearful that we may say restrict everyone to the stands and nothing, you know, we've put a big fence up now where we can't mingle with the visitors, which might still be a good thing. I just know a lot of schools have friends and stuff, and they, it's a whole different society now with social media. My kids have friends all over, and they just love when they come to the games, they go to their away games just to see them. So you like that, but unfortunately, it's not always the best, you end up having, there are the select few that cause the problem. So I would like to say, we have designated areas where you can walk, there are concrete walkways at the stadium. You can't walk from the stands to the concession stands or to the bathroom.
Right.
My kid's sitting there going, I'm not damn scared, if I hit somebody, they wanna fight, they wanna hit me. Whoa, what are you talking about? So I walk there, I'm like, wow, you're right. I'm sitting there saying to myself, why don't you get out of the way, and there's all these grass areas, you can stand, I love to see kids talking, and that's what they look toward to on Friday nights, go out there, talk, you have a good time, everything, that's great. But on the walkways, they're for walking, they're for movement, okay? Do not stand in the walkways, let's just have it very simple, whether it be a sign or police obstacle, my enforcement, please, these are for walking, so that fans can go to the bathroom, fans can go to the concession stands, we can sell more product, we make more money, you know? If you don't feel comfortable going to and from, well, it's gonna be next quarter before I get back, 'cause it takes so long to get there. I don't mind them standing, they're playing ball down this end zone, little kids playing, the older kids are down this end talking, that's great. But as long as there's a police presence or security of some sort, and just keeping the walkways clear. Because when, what happens, you walk, you bump, someone gets an attitude, these kids, they wanna fight, really? I mean, an adult walks by, they don't care. And again, the first action, no tolerance, just walk, walk, you don't need to be here, we're here to have a good time, enjoy ourselves, make it. No, we want you here having a good time, we want you here enjoying it, but at the first sign there's problems, we're not gonna tolerate it. And for communication, the big issue that I heard that night was, they never heard anything come over the P A. There needs to be some communication from the ground to the top, so they can immediately say, whatever happened, please exit to your right, please cautious run, 'cause the biggest thing, no one gets hurt until they start rushing. I mean, that's, that's, let's say this, sounds terrible, if there's a gun, how many rounds can you get off? What's gonna hurt someone or kill someone or break a leg or whatever else? My kids constantly, girls, sit down, sit still, pull off to the side, get out of the way, let, be calm and think. But again, and that happens, you can't think that way, I know, but if we have some guidance from the P A, so down on the ground, P A, you know, this is what's happening, keep them abreast, they don't say anything until you tell them what to say, but no one said anything till way after, I don't know when it was.
I was there that night.
Right, and when it happened, it's chaos.
The first thing we saw was people running, and we had no clue.
You're just a suit, and you should.
I just sat there because I didn't know what to do, you know, we had children around us. The biggest fear I have is because there's a little boy that comes and sits with us, I don't know where his parents are, but he's, but if you don't let Daniel go away from us, there were some children who were not supervised. That scared me more than anything else, because the adults weren't anywhere near these children. And with people running, you don't know what could have happened to them, so whatever you all decide to do, there needs to be something in place where you have children under a certain age, be with an adult, whatever they do it, because that little boy, but he didn't even be there with me, but I don't know where his parents are.
I can't take care of, y'all go on.
Well, I mean, it's destructive, and it's disheartening, because we were having a good time, and then all of a sudden this.
I hate, I can't, it just drives me crazy.
This is the feedback that I had from the incident, that there was a major concern, and I was not there, this is all just, was that as a district, our immediate, I mean, we have a responsibility, we're in essence the parental, parental, parents in, on site, the band, the cheerleaders, and the football players. So we've got an obligation to direct those, and there was not, the people in charge of that, like, one...
Your coaches, someone's, at least these people...
Right, those are our people, that's our chain of command, it needs to come down, what to them, to them, to tell the kids what to do and where to go, you know, the football players, you know, have some policy that if there's a fight or something like this, they head to the field house, but, I mean, you know, one group of cheerleaders, the high school group of cheerleaders, sent them to the field house, the middle school cheerleaders told them to run, and they were outside, they ended up outside the fence, so you've, we...
Sure, and having some general...
We need to know, I mean, my point is, you get on an airplane, they tell you where the exits are and what to do in case of an emergency, if this one's not available, you go to this one. And I just feel like every site we take our children into, we need to have a plan A of accident, if that is blocked off, we need to have a plan B of it, because what if they have not been able to go to the field house? If that route had been blocked? So we just need, and we didn't, the players, band members, the cheerleaders, need to know who to turn to for direction, and there needs to be a clear, I don't know that we had some adults in the room who were in charge.
The football evidently had communication because they all exited before anyone else exited.
Well, and what I also heard from that was, that created a greater panic in the stands, because, you know, they're run, get off the field, and they're tramp, you know, stampeding this way, and the stands then are thrown into a tis by the appearance of chaos, you know, of a threat or something. And that was like, oh, when the fence came down and there was a breach onto the field, quote unquote, and that, then my players were... I just think we need very clear communication, and the thing that, actually, the football coach called me, and I said, you know, I've been in, my whole life has been in emergency scenarios, and everyone, they will feed off of however you are acting. If you are acting panicked, they will be, if you act very controlled, if you are in control, they will feed off of your energy. And I think we had some panic, is what I...
So you're saying, and I agree, that each coach or each responsible, whatever, have a protocol. Cheer girls, this is what we do, bands, that's the large fraction of football, that's what we do in the stands, the little game plan.
Right, that's a communication from the P A. We're our students, that, because we're the parents on site for these kids, and whether we go, wherever we go. And so we are responsible for them, and I think we need to have very clear communication of who those kids look to for direction, and how that is transmitted.
I've met with two of the three A Ds to make sure that that is done, that we have a protocol where cheerleaders banned. So that should be in place at this point. The only third one that I have to meet with is Lamar, but the other two, we've had that conversation, to share that down to each one of your coaches to make sure they know where to go during that time, so.
And please ask them to be calm, 'cause I just think they, they increase the level of anxiety amongst...
If you show control, then I'm following the leader.
Absolutely, you're following whatever you're saying.
Whether you're wrong, be in control.
Yes, sir.
You know, I was, I was out there, and, you know, Maureen is right, the thing that concerns me, number one, is you've got all these kids running around, these small kids. Now, we are now a babysitting service, and I think that we at some point are gonna have to say to parents, you have a responsibility, if you're bringing your child, then you need to be there with your child. 'Cause you got all these little kids down in the, over the little corner playing ball and all that kind of stuff, and a ball hits one, somebody stand up that you said, Jamie, then they get upset 'cause the ball hit them, and creates another argument of fighting, whatever. The second point, the second thing that I'm concerned about, is staying along the fence. Now, there's a sign down there that says, the police are not standing, or no standing on the fence. It needs to be enforced. The third thing is, law enforcement cannot congregate in one spot. You know, I mean, and I understand a part of that, because nothing, I understand that nothing has happened, so I understand we get lax. But if we were paying somebody thirty something, thirty something dollars an hour, they need to be mobile and moving around that stand, around that stadium, inside as well as outside.
Also, have we cleared out who, where the chain of command, I mean, was it, we had Hartsville Police, and we had, you know, we had the county sheriffs, and so, I mean, do we now know who's, who's in charge?
Well, the Kellytown State Sheriff's, so...
Does everybody know that?
Well, you know, what we've tried to do is have them work together.
Right, I mean, they need to have their chain of command.
But we had that, we had a meeting with them, but...
And I think, and we did meet the sheriff the day after, Monday, following the incident, and it was a very good meeting, gave us good, positive feedback, and all throughout the incident, I had a sheriff deputy right there with me, communicating with me, while I was communicating with Dr. Newman, who was on the phone with the sheriff. So there was never a question about the communication piece, because between Dr. Newman, myself, and the sheriff, we were all communicating at the same time, making whatever decision we need to make. So I think that particular night, I happened to be there, so we just stayed on the phone, and the sheriff was very, when he got there, he was very helpful, even when we cleared the stadium, he was very helpful in helping us do it as well, so...
But to your point, this happened last year, that was not the case. So this year, I remember right before football season started, the sheriff and I had a conversation, and he said, we really need to be able to be in charge, that's county, we need to be able to...
And I, I don't care who it is, I just, it needs to, we, everybody just needs to know who it is.
And I, but I think it's a good move to have some of the Hartsville Police help. Be, be part of that, because they know the kids, they know the community. And so, uh, it, it works best when, you know, this person's in charge, but these people are helping as well, because it's, it's, you know...
Well, it sounds like, I mean, y'all may have been doing it, but those are the ones we got it up to the P A and out to the masses. In a, in a timely enough fashion, maybe that's a better...
I, I would say that's true.
The second part of it, I mean, the other thing I wanted to ask about is, we don't ever react to things that have happened. So years ago, when a young man collapsed on the football field, the officer died. We, we had the issue of rescue squad, and the rescue squad not being there, because they were not mandated, they weren't mandated to have to be there. Have we rectified that, uh, because I thought about that the other night.
That was all taken care of.
No, I, I understand that, but the point is, at one point, they were doing it on a voluntary basis, it was not that they had to be there, they were there if they were available to be there. So my guess, my question is, at this, are we in a position where we're gonna be sure that, that the rescue squad is there, even if it has to be compensated for?
We, we have addressed that with all of the rescue squads. And so we do have somebody on site for all of our athletic events.
And we even dropped that down to middle school, because felt like they needed the same protection as the high school, so. Um, it's correct, we can present that early on.
Are all the schools using like the wanding or metal protectors? I know Lamar, they, what you tell me they do?
All of the schools are, are winding. That's right, that's true. And so, again, I think what you'll see for the next home game here, in Darlington and in Hartsville, you'll see some changes. Uh, we are gonna work on bringing some portable lighting in, to light up some of the darker areas that are outside. Good discussions with law enforcement as far as how, where, where we'll place them within the stadium and outside of the stadium, and spacing between themselves. Uh, talking to school administration about having, you know, uh, lots of kids in the middle of traffic versus somewhere away in the grass. Uh, you know, and having, for example, middle school administrators present to help supervise some of the middle school kids that, supposedly they're there with their parents, but I don't...
But Doc, I, I mean, at a certain age, at a certain age, I think parents on adult or responsible adult needs to be with these children. Now, whether you say that seven, whether you say that eight years old, six years old, or ten years old, I think at some point, we have got to say, if you're gonna bring, that the child's gonna be there, like Maureen said, a responsible adult needs to be with that child.
Yeah, I'm good with that, it's just, I need to sit here and say that you have to sit here in this seat the entire time, because part of the experience in high school is, walk to the concession stand, sure, so just growing up, you gotta learn responsibility, go, I hope I can go to my ballgame and trust my child to walk concession in and come back, or talk to his friends over here. I don't wanna come drop them off at the gate and walk off, I, I don't do that, I didn't do that there in high school. Mom, so, I, so, I, in the stadium, in the facility, yes, at a certain age. Now, you got high school kids, I mean, it's their game, it's their field, that's their, this is their school, they can do what they wanna do, I'm all for that. But as far as those underage kids, um, parent, either a guardian or either, if I take my kids or four of the kids, uh, little three or, uh, third graders and stuff to the game, I'm gonna be at that game. Um, they have the little group in the baseball field, we eat private game and all that, they're playing, everything, we come to the game. Y'all come to the stands, you wanna go to the session, that's fine. Where are you gonna be, what are you gonna do? I don't want my, sitting out, you know, that's, as a parent, I wanna have, take that responsibility for myself, but I just don't wanna drop them off, you're right. I, I don't think they should be at that game.
But you wanna keep that family atmosphere.
Correct, no, that's, that's what we tried to do, to build back, we lost this back when, years ago, they had a, a shooting or thought was a shooting, and then nobody came to the games again, went a couple of years, revenues dropped, family said, I'm not going there, and sure, first thing I heard, my child will never go back there again, so and so, I'm like, here we go again, you know. And I understand safety, at some point, it's just, it didn't happen, um, and, and, but it could, I know it could, but it could, I could walk out this door right here, this might shoot me, it, it could. Um, I just wanna continue, like you said, we worked hard to get the festive atmosphere, the family atmosphere, I wanna continue to have that. And if you got a good presence of security, and everyone knows, the principals know, and they're walking, speaking to the kids, you know, the kids acting up, Johnny, we're still at school, you know, um, I just think it makes a big difference.
Thankfully, nothing bad happened, you know, it gives us an opportunity to be prepared for the next time. And, and to, you know, it gives us great opportunity to make some changes.
Are we, is this?
Exactly, so I...
I always think it was, it was, you know, it was a, a lesson without big consequences.
That's what I, that's right.
Thankful, I agree.
But I understand, and you later did, uh, broke a leg or whatever?
Well, uh, it was broke, I heard later, uh, that it was, uh, knee, is that what it, that's what I, because it was a band student, if I'm not mistaken. Was it, no, 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 that's the same one. Knee? Yeah, it was knee.
She's from Mia.
Now, now the thing is, whether the parents there or not, I haven't been to a football game lately, with the kids like ripping and running, I mean, they're just ripping and running, up and down the bleachers, up and down the bleachers. And the parents may be there, and they're not gonna stop them. And I just look for one that's just flipping.
I'll go, so.
So, so, so what I'm, because generally, I always sit up in the back, so I can sort of see everything, and people don't harass me about firing the coach and the referee, and, you know. If you see it, you're gonna cry, that one.
That's right.
Sit down and rock with a lot of...
They don't rock, up top, they don't even see you.
Yeah, I, I've witnessed the same, and talked to the administrators and said, you need to have something in place. Like I said, I've, I've made, I've made the suggestion, you need to have your middle school administrators here, helping police, sending younger kids that are there that they know. Um, and truthfully, if you got an area they can sit in, that'd be great, and Darlington's got that capability. I think the big issue about the fence and everything else is, when I've asked people, we, we've been talking to sheriff about, you know, you want us to enforce getting everybody off the fence, that the crowd that was out there last week, my understanding is, I don't know if you'd have a place for them all to sit.
You wouldn't, and that's why I say, we say the fence, I like it, I, I hate restricting that, if you're watching the game... See, we had this big block here so that people can't stand, where you walk, you can't watch, because it's blacked out, the football team, great. On the areas on the end, you can, okay? Well, you're not blocking anyone in the stands, which is good, so all around, I think it's neat, Hartsville just packed, there's nowhere to sit, so, and the, and the kids down here on this end, they're playing, they've got the kids back here, the adults watching the game. Likewise, you got a group of people sitting here watching the game, I think, I like it, because it's like you're overflowing, we can't go to the outside, you know? Well, I guess you can now go around this way.
You don't wanna put them on the outside, right?
And that's my point, and so, so you, you know, that's a good thing, you got that capacity, you know?
How did the, how did the fence fall over?
The outside fence.
That fell onto the field, that was...
So it, it was, you know, there's a perimeter fence that's behind the stands.
Right.
And if I'm not mistaken, somebody got shoved and pushed back onto the fence.
It's not the inside.
Because, because what I was hoping to catch was that once the, the inside fence fell over into the field, that's why he had, you know, started running his kids.
No, it was outside, it all started outside.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
But he said, once it came, he said it started coming, it came onto the field. I didn't understand what that meant.
Where they fell back into the, into the stadium. They were on the outside and pushed back in, and I think somebody probably saw the commotion going.
No, the crowd ran behind the football team.
Yes.
Which caused the football team...
To run.
To run, it caused the other football team to run, so.
I just, we need clear communication, we need clear plans, and we need level heads.
Yep. We're, working on it. Um, last thing I'll mention about, um, football games is that we are planning on starting at six o'clock Friday night for the Darlington-Hartsville game. Uh, and the reason why is because the crowd is so large for that, big, big crowd, a lot going on. Um, I think it's senior night for Darlington here, and so we wanna make sure that we take care of everything. And get, and, uh, we wanna make sure we've got enough time to take care of everything, so. We are starting, uh...
Is that game in Darlington or not?
It's in Darlington, so, Mr. Johnson, I think we decided on six.
Yeah.
We did, we did decide on six o'clock.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, Hartsville will bring a crowd.
Right.
So that way...
Yeah, we gonna sit on the outside, y'all want us to sit over there, y'all bring us more bleachers for us over there.
I, I, I just wanna share that from the, uh, Hartsville played, uh, Marburg High. Both sides looked like the home crowd, I mean, I, I mean, people...
Hartsville takes more than home, everywhere they go.
And the, uh, and the, but the thing, what, what, what really kept me off is, is city and the school district is at odds. So the sheriff took over the, the field. But both of those sheriffs were walking around together, and that, that, that was a, a plus. I mean, Harvard and Doris are walking together. But the, the point still remain is, uh, the officers that go with our team, do they have their jurisdiction issue?
They do, R S R O does.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, R S R O, now, you know, the, the S R O is considered to have jurisdiction across the stadium.
Okay, okay.
That's good, that's okay.
But what about the Sheriff's Department? Because like, sometimes we have the Sher, not the Sheriff's Department, okay, or is it just S R O? It's just S R Os?
That's the one that has jurisdiction.
It's only has jurisdiction, but don't they go, because I mean, they, they like escort them?
Yeah.
Jump.
I'm a total footballer.
You need to go.
I'm not going.
Yes, you should.
Yes, you should.
Yes, you should.
All right, moving on through the topics here. The other thing that we have been discussing a lot, uh, recently, is we have, uh, something called behavior managers, um, that are for special education students. Um, and they are, they're typically, uh, for students that, um, need an adult with them in order to help them function in a regular school setting.
Is that different from a shadow?
It's not, that's what I call them.
Okay, just your, I just, is that what...
So, right there is one of the things that we're talking about changing, for, for a couple of reasons. Um, but, uh, shadows is what I call them. Shadows have been substitutes in this district forever. They are not employees. Um, and so, we, we have treated them as substitutes and paid them as substitutes for a long time, and so I'm not used to that. Uh, and, and, you know, there's a couple, uh, concerns I have of that. First and, first and foremost, a shadow has a very personal relationship with a student. These students that, that need a shadow, um, have to respond to the shadow. And so, um, it's really important who you get for the individual student. Um, and it's really important that that person, uh, is actively known in the school, and, and knows what to do in the school. So I, I have some concerns that, um, that we're just their substitutes, because that means that they're interchangeable. Uh, and, and I, I don't think they are. The other issue is, is that, um, more than likely, they're with our student a hundred and eighty days out of the school year, all day long. So to me, they are employees. I mean, if, if, we, we should treat them as employees. Substitute day, substitute, so we have...
It's coming out of substitute, I mean, so there are, isn't there some, don't we have some specialized fund? I mean, aren't those covered under, or we have to individually, we individually as a district cover that? Okay, so it's not covered under some title?
I mean, you, you, you could say it's under special education, but, but part of your special education is funded by, uh, special ed funds, I D E A.
Right.
Uh, and then the other part is general fund, so one of the two is covering everything.
These don't come under Kelly Services, right?
They are.
They are.
Yes, they are, which is an issue. So, uh, that's, again, I started digging into the substitute, well, to the, I started digging into the shadow issue when I heard how they were being hired, it was through Kelly Services. Well, then I, my question was, why are we doing this through Kelly Services? Well, because they've always been substitutes. And I was like, why are they, why are they substitutes? I mean, they're, they're, they're employees, I mean, they, they should be with us. Um, and really, the cost of them as an employee versus paying Kelly Services a fee to put them in is almost the same.
When you factor in like benefits, et cetera, et cetera.
So we're, we're starting to look at, uh, the most critical places that have these children, that we, we wanna start hiring those folks in as employees. Um, and, and the, I tell you, the reason it was given for them being substitutes, and this is true, um, is that if there is such thing as a temporary job, it could be a shadow. So for example, if a student leaves the district that has a shadow, that shadow doesn't have a job anymore. But usually, there's somebody else that comes into the district that needs a shadow. So I, I've really not had, had a problem in the past replacing them. So, uh, several reasons, we're really starting to look at this, but I wanted to let you all know that we're, we're, we're looking at, you know, what it would take to bring some of these folks in. Uh, the other thing is, is that we have a need for bus monitors, for special education buses. Well, the best people to do that are shadows for the kids that are riding the buses. And so they get on when the kid gets on, they get off when the kid gets off. Again, it's potential to make some more money, because they're with a student longer on the bus, but it's also another set of eyes, adult eyes on the school buses.
And you don't, I tell you, I promise you, you don't want anything to happen, you know?
That's right, that's right, and that's why that personal relationship and control and accountability for us.
And what I used to do is send them to somebody, but I, I don't wanna, somebody would do that. There's an advocacy group that I'm really, really, but let something happen to one of those kids.
Oh, that's right, so...
They're beating this Maureen and, uh, one that went to last year, that, that was a real, and it's a, it's a big group of advocates, especially in God.
Well, I, I wanna do the right thing, first and foremost, for the kid.
Exactly.
And then, second of all, for the adult, treating them as an employee, if they really are an employee. So it's, it's about kids first, and we need to do what's right for our kids, but when we have an opportunity to do something for the adults, we should as well, so.
And I think it takes a, a special type of person to deal with that type of kid, day in and day out.
That's right.
Because I've had some people that have been substitutes saying, they've been substituted for doing things with our district for a long time. So when it came time and they had to go through Kelly, they said, they ain't gonna, and they wasn't gonna be bothered. And they were good folks that were, for me, with the student body and all of that, and they said, no, I'm not doing that.
Is, is there two, well, I, I'm sort of confused. If a student by an I E P required a shadow?
Correct.
Okay. That shadow is hired by us, what you're saying? No, no, it's not, but, but we are using it same, same person.
Not all the time.
Not all the time, so, uh, it, it's, it's sort of...
Used to be.
Yeah, it's sort of mixed, a mixed bag of, of, of coverage here.
Right.
Okay. Um, I guess what, what I'm asking is, I know there's a mixed bag, but I don't know whether all the board member understand what I'm, what I'm talking about, but, but the, the thing is, uh, clear cut, we have to have somebody on that student regardless, based on I E P and all that.
If it's originally the I E P, that's okay.
But some other agency is, is tapping in on that.
No, some other, we got another agency doing this, so they could care as long as they have a body over there. They don't take any real consideration of the situation, is what we're saying.
But the thing is, the district is liable to, to make sure to have one.
Yes, you're correct.
Right. Now, uh, sometime the other agency like D S S or whatever, they'll flip the bill for putting a, 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 a shadow on the person, am I correct?
Not that I've experienced.
No?
Not that I've experienced.
They don't pay for that.
But they require it.
They don't require that the I E P comes and... Yes, that's the thing they do with the I E P.
Okay. Well, when, when you have the I E P meeting, all these folks at the table.
There's a group of people that are required to meet to do a child's I E P.
Right, right, right. The ones I said, and sometime the, uh, the D S S and the D J person, whatever.
Well, sometime they'd be there in special cases, but that's not necessarily all the way, not where it happens. And see, with Kelly Services, they, all they, all they're responsible for is having a body, they could care less about...
What, what the quality of the body?
You don't care.
That, that, that one, that one.
That's why he's gonna look in and do it in this other way.
Right.
So we, so we can maintain quality.
Right, right, the quality, yeah.
And get people that are committed to the child, and that, that we have a rapport with and accountability to us, so.
But, but the way it's done now, uh, how Kelly Services know, know, know when to send a person?
So right now, if an I E P meeting is conducted, and one is allowed, and special education services calls the Kelly Services and... and special education services calls the Kelly Services and says, we need a, a shadow at this particular school. Then I, I would prefer that we interview them out for our school staff to interview those folks.
But, uh, some students require one-on-one?
Right, that's right. So they need to, they need to get the right person, is what you're saying. All right, the last thing I got on the miscellaneous is, uh, it's conference season, y'all. Which means, uh, we've got, we've got the National School Boards Conference that's coming up and then we have the National, is it?
Advocacy.
Advocacy. And so I think what we've talked about in the past is try to rotate some folks going. Um, and I, I think we talked about an allotment of two for one and two for the other. So I, I just wanted to throw that out there. I let you all arm wrestle over the, the two and two. Um, but, uh, I certainly wanted to put that out. I think y'all have worked out a rotation, it sounded like to me, or y'all talked about a rotation. Uh, if, if, you know.
Go every other year.
It's one or the other.
One or the other.
Yeah. And so, uh, again, I think all those are, are starting to, registrations are starting to pop up. So if y'all have an interest in earning some extra board points, um. Thought I'd mention that.
Jimmy, you thought your problem was?
Well, the, uh, the national open up on the eighteenth. So I, I guess you put, put in for the slots, but let them have a name to them.
Right, 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 right.
Well, if, if you don't have an address, oh, we just have to pass it out.
Charleston, I went last year, so, so we disqualified.
Where's your national? Where's the shirt?
Uh, Philadelphia.
I don't have any desire for the national, cause I mean, I, but I, I thought the legislative one was.
That's great.
That was a good one.
That's been watching.
About three years ago.
Bad, and then what else is there? Uh, the advocacy, which is.
It'll be three years in January.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I wouldn't mind wanting the advocacy one again, but I, I don't have any interest in the national. Or you?
Probably go to the national, but.
Oh, national, I don't have any interest in that, the national.
So, uh, uh. So.
Advocacy was in D C.
So do, do you have any?
You gonna do the national in Philadelphia?
Who is that?
Uh, March. Yeah, if you stop smoking like that.
That's all. Just bling and I. No, no, David.
How do they have the same one in, in D C?
You go have it.
I think that's Jan, in the January.
You have to go every avenue, you can't go too many.
All righty. Okay, um, I think we are now down to. I wasn't gonna say executive, but it's test scores. You, you said that so enthusiastically. No, I, I don't know if I can finish for about four hours. I know, I know. Started. Uh, yeah, I apologize, I can see the color is a little bit off on the screen. So, um, I'm hoping we'll be able to work through it. Just looking around someone else. Well, y'all had a real meal. Y'all keep talking, you know. Well, y'all are just.
You gotta heat it up in the microwave a little.
Oh, that's all right.
You wanna heat that up?
Yeah, you wanna heat that up.
Okay, um, so we're gonna talk about test results in a couple of different formats. Uh, this is the format that, um, is put out in the newspapers.
Right.
Uh, and it has kind of come out, uh, with the state results. And again, I'm sorry about the queue on the screen, it's pinkish, I'm not sure why.
It's the.
Projector, okay. Uh, but anyways, what we, what I, what I want to be able to show you is the difference between seventeen and eighteen by school. Uh, and this is the meets or exceeds percentages, okay? So, so by school for English and language arts, for example, um, that's this whole area here, these two columns, and of course there's seventeen and eighteen. And then, uh, math, science, so, for example, uh, if we look at the top, you start off, you see that Rockington meets or exceeds was at thirty-four point nine. They dropped to thirty-three point nine as far as percent of students that meets or exceeds. Um, Brunson-Darwin was pretty much flat, there was a point one percent change. Um, Carolina dropped, um, from fifty-seven point five, fifty-one point nine. Uh, Darlington Middle went up, that was a trend for Darlington Middle across the board. Uh, our middle schools did, uh, did well actually compared to previous years. Uh, Hartsfield Middle went up, uh, a small amount. Uh, North Hartsfield went up, uh, Rosenwall went up a little bit. Uh, Middle went down. Spalding Elementary went up, uh, a small amount. Spalding Middle went up a decent increase there. St. John's had a, a, a very good increase compared to where they were. Uh, Thornwell School for the Arts, down a chunk, Washington Street down a lot. Uh, West Hartsfield, uh, they were actually up just a, a little bit as well. So this is the English Language Arts part and it's meets or exceeds, which is the information that's put out in the newspapers. But this breaks it down by school, uh, you can see for the district and then the state. And so seventeen, uh, the state was at thirty-nine point six, the state went up, uh, about two point four. The district went up, but only one point four. So the, the district did not move up as much as the state did. Um, and like I said, you can see the gap between the district and the state as far as E L A goes. If you look at the same situation with math, you can see the different buildings here, uh, and the differences between seventeen and eighteen. Um, again, the district, uh, went up, uh, the state went up. So the state was up about, about three point four percent, the district went up five percent in math. Again, the gap though is still over ten percent. So you're, you're eleven point six percent here off of the state average and you're about, uh, almost, again, nine point two off of state here. Uh, when you get to science, um, it gets a little bit closer on some of the gains. Typically, science and math mirror each other and English, E L A and social studies mirror each other as far as if, if we do well in E L A, typically you'll see that in social studies as well. Um, again, the district went down, uh, and the state went down. The district went down farther than the state did. Uh, but the gap between, in, in social studies, for example, uh, is less than the gaps in E L A and math. Again, science, less than as well. So this kind of gives you just a snapshot of where we were over the past two years. Now, truthfully, we need to be at the state minimum, that's where we need to be. Uh, that's where we've been in the past. Um, and so we have had the ability, uh, to mirror, um, what the state has done. It looked like about fourteen is where we mirrored, and the state dropped significantly, we dropped significantly. Um, and then the gap has continued to grow since fourteen. And so that's a trend we have to reverse. Uh, and I, you know, I'll be the first to tell you, even though we're showing some greens up here and some gains, it's not where we need to be and it's not where we want to be. Uh, so, you know, we, we have to, and this is just meets exceeds, you know, on the other side of this is kids that are not met and you really want to decrease that amount, right? That's your lowest kids, you want to push them up into approaching or meets. So, so we want to, this is just one segment of kids, we really need to be working on all of our kids for this. So, again, this is one format, this is the one that's in the newspapers all the time, it's what folks report on. But, um, I, I, I like to look at it in a different detail. I think y'all have heard me talk about this in the past. And so, for example, um, I know it's really small, um, let's see if I can make this a little larger. I gotta get bigger than that, I'm gonna lose quick like this, there we go.
Awesome eyes.
All right. Just by. Apple pie, that's one of them. Okay, there we go, is that a little better? All right. So, um, here's what I look at to really get a snapshot of all of our kids, not just the meets or exceeds or the not met. Um, I look at mean average scores, these are the average actual test scores of every student, uh, in the district. And so, for example, at Rockington Elementary, um, you'll see the first number that's up there is four hundred and fifty-seven point sixty. That's every student in that school that took the E L A, uh, S C Ready Test and it's their average score, okay? So every kid grades, uh, three through five at Rockington, that's their average score, uh, that they had. And what I compare that to is everybody else in the state. Cause that's really who we're measured against, is everybody else. It's the state, but truthfully, it's how do you compare the state? So, for example, there's your N number, there's six hundred and fourteen elementary schools that we are comparing to all of our buildings, all right? Uh, with districts, there's actually eighty-four districts in it, excuse me, eighty-three districts in the state. So as a district, we're at fifty-three. And this is E L A. And then as you go down, this is, this is all of the elementary and middle schools here. And you're gonna see coated red or coated green, this is their ranking out of six hundred and fourteen schools, okay? And so if their ranking from the previous year went down, meaning they dropped in ranking, it's red, okay? So this kind of really gives us an idea of how is a school doing? I mean, and I could, you know, I do this by grade, I look at every grade in every school and compare them. But, but really, but I can tell, if you give me the average of a school, I know what's going on in that building. Yet granted, in one building, third grade may be a little bit lower than fifth grade. In another building, it may be fifth that's lower than third, there's variables there. But the average really gives me an idea over time of how we're really doing. And so, you know, what we have to be able to do is say, okay, last year, Rockington was at three thirty-five, they dropped four eighteen, okay? And so we don't need to be dropping, we need to be getting better against everybody else. Brunson-Darwin the year before was five twenty-two, they were at five twenty-three out of six hundred and fourteen schools. Carolina was seventy-seven, in E L A, they dropped to one fifty. Uh, North Hartsfield, uh, two twenty-four, they went up one slot. Uh, Rosenwall, they were at six oh one out of six fourteen. They moved up to five eighty-six. So you can see, again, the, the, the way this, and I, you know, I put the four years worth of trend on this. And I can tell you what I've seen is that four years ago, we went up and then we dropped the past two years and then it's kind of a mixed bag. You can see it's probably half red, half green, some of the schools went up, some of them went down. If you look over here, social studies, all of them went down except one building. Spalding Middle is the only, uh, excuse me, Spalding Elementary is the only one, uh, that went up in social studies. Um, if you look at the middle schools, notice all the green, right? The middle schools actually did better this past year, uh, because they didn't do well last year. You know, I mean, that's just what it is, so, um, but if you see, again, the trends here, let me see if I can get this to work. So you can see in fifteen sixteen, that's what the rank was, forty-eight, right? We're down, we're, we're, we're at fifty-three now. We were fifty-five in fourteen fifteen. So fifty-five, we made progress, then we dropped, then we dropped. So, again, I would prefer to look at, um, mean average because it gives me a better snapshot of what's really going on. And also it gives me, it tells me how I'm doing against other schools. Where do we rank? How are we doing this? And then next, let me show you the high schools now. All right, so these are end-to-course tests, scores. Um, and I've also got A C T on here as well. So, again, these are individual schools, um, and you can see the trend, we started off down here in fourteen fifteen. And, you know, Darlington High School, for example, was one ninety-five. They moved up in ranking to one seventy-seven. And then they dropped. And so, no, three seventy-seven, I'm sorry, I was.
You can't read it, you know we can't.
I know, I know, it's a struggle.
You can't read it like this, you've taken.
But, but the key thing again is, these are, again, these are end-to-course scores. Algebra, biology, English, U S history, okay? Middle schools take algebra and, and English, high schools are the only ones that have biology and U S history. And, and it's, you know, again, it's, it's a hodgepodge across on the end course. Typically, all right, so let me explain something about the rankings. The middle schools will always be ranked higher than the high schools, let me explain why. So you, you see, for example, our, our highest middle school was at one eighteen, the Spalding Middle. Um, middle schools have all of their honors kids take the end-to-course tests, which is all of their best students, all right? So your best students are taking the test in middle school and your students that aren't necessarily your best students are taking it in high school. So your middle school scores are always gonna be higher.
I, I, I understand that, but what I'm also, but what I'm seeing is biology and U S history is not taken in middle school and comparatively, we're running about the same numbers in those classes. So, I mean, if, if that is what you're saying, then, then we should see a corresponding drop there. But we're kind of consistent across the board in not doing well.
Correct, so if you, to put it in perspective, out of four hundred and fifty-six, the first two hundred and forty are middle school, schools. When you look at the, the, the raw data and you look at the mean averages, the first, let's say half, is middle schools, uh, predominantly. So really, i- i- if you look at, starting at two fifty, uh, to five hundred is, is where you're looking at, so, so close to two fifty is where you need to be. Darlington's at four oh two, I mean, to be at the top of the list, Darlington's at four oh two. Hartsfield's at three seventy-three, Lamar's at three twenty-three, Mayo's at one seventy-six. So, uh, yeah, we're not where we need to be, they're not, and you're right. The trajectory, if you see where we've been with these courses, there's a lot more red each year, right? It's probably the only, English this past year is where we actually went up a little bit. But we're not talking about huge increases here. You know, you were four twenty and you, you moved up to four seven, you were four thirteen, thirteen, you dropped to four twenty-six. Three forty-nine, you moved to three forty. 349, you moved to 340. They're not huge.
I mean, the trend isn't going to, so I guess my question for you is, what, what, what are we putting in place to, that, that's more relevant. I mean, these are raw numbers. We can all look at them and say,
Yep.
this is not the trend that we want to see.
Correct.
So,
Okay.
how are we gonna adjust?
Let me get you there. So, the last time, I want to say, ACT scores just came out. So, I did want to be able to at least show you all that. Again, we were, as a district, 53rd four years ago. We moved up to 46. We went down to 47. We're 39 this past year. And you've got some spots, again, that, that we had improvement on the ACT. SAT scores just came out in barcode. So, we won't see those for probably another two weeks. But we will see those. I'll make sure to, to get those to you when they come out.
Is that also the AP and the IBs scores?
It's just SAT that I've seen so far. All right. And then, I do want to show you one other thing, though. Thanks. Just to put a relative spin on this. All right. I'll blow this up in a second. Quiz in five minutes. I'll blow this up in five minutes. So, this data is from 2009, 10. Yeah, this is 2009, 10. And so, we were using a different test. Right, it was pass. And then, our, the way we were getting points for schools on the report cards and everything was very different. Okay? Back in 2009 and 2010. So, for example, you got points for high school dropout rate. Significant points on the report card. Actually, high school graduation was 40% of your total report card score back in 910. Your end-of-course scores were 30%. There were, there were several different variables. Special education, all-ED scores counted in as well. So, if you did a good job working with your special education students with all-ED, that counted towards the scores back in 910. So, I just want to make sure everybody understands, we got a new report card that's coming out that we've talked a little bit about. But it's apples and oranges compared to the last time we did report cards. It's just significantly different. Just as an exercise, I took the, I took not met as a district. Okay? And so, I, I went ahead and sorted this spreadsheet. It's a whole bunch of lines over here. But there's 83 districts here. And I sorted it by English percent not met. Okay? And so, the, the number one district at that, in 2009, 10, was Lexington 5. And their not met score for English was 15.8%, 15.9%. That was their not met. Okay? So, sorting it by the not met percent, which has nothing to do with the report card score or absolute points, right, from 910. I come down to... I had my mouse, I can pull it up. Darlington was 54 on percent not met back in 2009, 10. Okay? So, but Darlington was very high in high school graduation dropout and what we had done to work on that. They were very high in SC alt. There were a lot of other factors. I tell you that because the picture's not always in the met or not met. Sometimes there's other things that are going on in the district. So, I wanted to at least be able to show. And if I had my mouse, I would be able to pull this up again. But I had to switch out this, I had to switch this out instead. So, 54. There we are. It's the one you really can't read. It's Darlington. It's a lot clearer on, on my screen than it is on this one. So, anyways. I just, I wanted to be getting some relevance of what's going on. All right. So, what are we gonna do about this? I think what's most important is, this is last year's scores. There's not a thing we can do about it now. I mean, these have come and gone. That, that bus has left already. So, what are we gonna do to get closer to the state averages? And what are we gonna do to really move the district up in rankings? And move our schools up in rankings? Well, if you all remember at the beginning of the year, I started off with the goals that we set. And we set those at our board retreat. We started talking about those. So, to give you an update on where we are, for example, the goals for K through second grade, K4 through second grade, Fanta's and Pennell, and high school. Fanta's and Pennell specifically focuses on assessing what students don't have for reading and what they need. Right? We've never really been targeted on grades K4 through second grade. Really, the state hasn't been. But I can promise you that if they're, if, if the kids don't have what they need in first and second grade, it's an uphill battle. If they can't read by third grade, we're in trouble. And so, it was on purpose that we put in Fanta's and Pennell. That's something we've put in new this year. And it focuses, it targets, it targets individual students for what are their weaknesses in reading? What are their weaknesses in sounds? And, and being able to text-dependent analysis? Do they understand what they're reading? Right? You know, fourth, K4, K5, they may not. But second grade, they need to understand what they're reading. And so, we have to immediately focus on our lower grades or it gets worse from then on. And I, I really think that's what you're seeing on a lot of these scores is that it's, it was bad, and it stayed bad. And so, between, so the K4 through second grade, the Fanta's and Pennell that we're working on, the kits, there's also curriculum and teaching professional development that's in there. So, once we get past the point of, okay, here's what the kids have the weaknesses in, it's very specific, here's what you've got to teach to, to get better at it. Here's what you've got to do. And it's not gonna be just this one school that's doing it. It's all of our schools. They're using the same kits. They're using the same information to do this. So, in the past, you may have a school and a principal with a great idea, and you may have a brand-new principal in another building. And they're trying to figure out how to help their kids. Right? That, that needs to be consistent. We need to be taking all, all of the good ideas from every building, and everybody needs to be able to utilize them. But we need to have some consistency in what we're teaching our kids and what we expect them to learn. This puts it in place. Okay? All right. Move up to grades three through five. What are we doing there? You heard me talk about data teams. You'd heard me talk about professional learning communities. We are doing a specific curriculum with professional learning communities. And it, it, it targets having teachers, grade-level teachers in large schools, content-level teachers in small schools, meaning to discuss on a weekly, bi-monthly, monthly basis, how the kids, where they are, right? Remember me talking about where are our kids? That came from the SC rating. We've got scores for the individual kids from last year. We know where they are. We know where we need to get them to. So, how are we gonna do that? Well, they're, they've got the standards. Let's say, third grade. I had a second grader that's now in third grade this year. What do I need to teach them? Well, the third-grade standards are out there. So, what should I teach and when should I teach it in order to get them ready to take this year-end test? Because that's, I mean, unfortunately, we have to do that. So, it's all about the teachers in the buildings and the teachers across the district having the same conversation. Here are the standards. Here's how much time I have to teach. Let me lay this out in a map, pacing guide, whatever you, you know, we call them guides, but curriculum map pacing guide, whatever you want to call it. And so, I know between this time and this time, I gotta teach all these standards. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna schedule it out this way. So, by October 30th, I should be here with all of the standards I have to complete by the end of this year.
And are we benchmarking?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, so we should have an idea where we, how we're moving these kids throughout the year.
Yes.
Okay.
So, let me talk about the assessment piece. Thank you for bringing that up. So, now that we have teachers sitting down, talking about, okay, how did your student do on this particular unit that we're teaching this week? Right? Or last week? We're using common assessments. So, otherwise, we can pull questions from the standards, right? With the programs we have, Mastery Connect, we can say, we're teaching standard 2.0 in third-grade standards, and I want to give a 10-question quiz. Boom, there's my 10 questions. Here it is. I can give those to all of the third-grade students in the school. I can give it to all the third-grade students in the district. I can find out how we're doing teacher-to-teacher in the building. I can find out how we're doing school-to-school in the district on the same exact material. It also identifies the students and who is behind. So, for example, with the Mastery Connect, out of that 10-question quiz, is red, yellow, or green? Green says I got it. Yellow says I'm almost there. Red says, I don't have it. So, I need to find out what percent of my kids don't have it. And then, when I get back again the following week to talk with the other teachers, the grade-level teachers, and say, hey, my kids didn't get this part of what we taught. You know what? Mine didn't either. You know what? I don't think mine did either. So, what did we not do? We gotta go back and reteach that. Right? So, that's the first part, is the common assessment. That's just quizzes. Okay? The second piece to that is benchmarks. The third piece to that is map. The fourth piece to that is finally at the end of the year. So, benchmarks should be on quarters. Okay? Benchmarks are, where, what do I know as of today on the standards I'm supposed to know? Okay? So, let's say the pacing guide, because that's, that's a really important part. We've decided, all third-grade teachers in this building have decided that we should be here as of today on all the standards that should be taught. The benchmark should test the students on everything from here to the beginning of the year. Follow me? So, it's testing for knowledge today of what's been taught today. Map is a predictor test. Map is saying, okay, based on what you know today, you're gonna, I predict you'll finish here on SC Ready. You see the difference? One of them's a predictor.
And how many times a year are we doing math?
Three times a year.
Okay. So, we should have, we should know where we, all throughout the year, approximately where we are.
Absolutely.
So,
Absolutely. So, so benchmarks, and really, I've been talking with the principals and teachers about benchmarks since we're getting, we've had hurricanes. We've had eight days. We may do a benchmark closer to Christmas to see where we are. We've already done one map. We'll do another map in February-ish, winter map. Then, we'll do another benchmark to see where we are to get ready for SC Ready. Then, we'll do another map. So, and teachers have something called SLO, Student Learning Objectives. Okay? And so, SLOs are what the teachers are saying, I need to accomplish for my class this year. And it's all based off of the data that we're talking about. So, the key is everybody having data in front of them on a regular basis, talking about where their kids are and what's working and what's not working. If you do that in isolated silos, you'll have pockets of success. But as a system, as a district, we won't succeed. So, we've gotta find a way to get everybody on the same page, doing the same things. High schools, again, the, the PLC process for high schools, not only was it built around block scheduling and how are we gonna teach for 90 minutes? And how is all the information we're gonna get in there? But it's by content. So, all of our algebra teachers across the district, we need to be saying, what do our kids need to know by today? What do our kids need to know by January 1st? By March 1st? And we need to test to find out if our kids are there. And if they're not, really, you don't want to wait until March to figure out your kids aren't there. In a semester class, right? So, in a semester class like we've changed to, in a block schedule, now you gotta be there soon. Right? So, before, you could do it throughout the year. Now, today, we need to have a pretty good idea of where our kids are. This would be a benchmark time for our high schools. Yes.
Because, I mean, if you look at our end-of-course for highs, for our high schools, we have large numbers who are failing the end-of-course. Are these kids, I mean, I know their final, because end-of-course is 20% of their final grade.
Correct.
So, prior to that, are they failing the class?
So, what, what would you expect?
I mean, I would say if you can't pass this test, then you haven't been passing all along.
If you have been, then we've got some other.
But if you've got, if you're passing, if you're not, I, I just think we've probably, I think there's some mismatch in what's going on. All of a sudden, we've got over 50% of our kids not passing end-of-course.
So, on the whole, you're correct. On the whole, if you don't pass the end-of-course, you shouldn't be passing the test. You shouldn't be passing the class.
No.
Right?
I mean, that, that 20%, that being 20% of your grade, could make you not pass the class. But...
You can throw some outliers. You'll have some outliers that maybe don't test well. Right? There's, there's outliers. But on the whole, you are correct. And really, it goes back down to the lower grades. So, I shouldn't take a benchmark or take map and be showing that I'm two grade levels behind and I'm an A-B student. Right? So, so, you know, that, those are the other conversations at the lower-grade levels. But, but to your point, you should not, if you, if you fail the end-of-course, then more than likely, you should not be passing the class because you didn't get all the content.
What happens if you fail? And, I mean, other than, yeah, that's 20% of your grade, you fail, I mean, what are consequences for it? I mean, because I, I guess my question, I mean, I'm just, how have we had gotten here?
Well, again,
I mean, is there no consequence for the teacher? Is there consequence only for the child? I mean,
So, so, so data is powerful. Data is powerful. It, now, we can track through benchmarks, through end-of-course, through everything else, we have a pattern of students not doing well or doing well. It is not uncommon for end-of-course tests, subjects to switch teachers out. Because if, if, if a teacher is not doing well with Algebra I, then we may need a different math teacher given end-of-course subject in, in testing. So, you, you basically, personalities, teaching certain subjects, what has been the norm in the past? What do your best teachers teach in high school?
I mean, I can look at, you can look at end-of-course scores, say, just pull out parts from high school, for example. I mean, their US history scores are better. I know why their US history scores are better.
So, your better teachers usually tend to teach your better kids. How are we passing so many kids that are failing so many end-of-course? Follow me? It's probably 57, 60% failing, or D, over 70% D and F. How do these kids get in that? D passes, let's be clear about that.
But, but I don't want it, I mean, to say that 75% of my kids are D and F, that's still not...
And 60% are DA? I understand your point, but Ds are passing.
I mean, C should be, C should be what we would
Right.
minimum want to expect of our students.
Let me ask a question. I'm very big to comment. Number one, we teach the children to a test, not, not teach the children. Because what we're saying to kids is, you, you've got to pass the end-of-course test. Now, my question becomes, is there a guilty factor for reteaching? Because if, if I'm teaching, and I've got to finish X amount of work by the end of the semester, conceivably, I may not have time to go back. Because you're holding me accountable for an end-of-course test, not for what you're trying to learn. And I think at the end of the day, we're, 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 we're not doing the kid, or, 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 we're affecting the kids. So, we put them out in the world, he can't function because we have a target.
Who develops the end-of-course test?
States.
States. States does.
So, does that mean we aren't teaching the state standards? Or the kid doesn't know? We don't know that the kid doesn't, you said the kid doesn't know. The kid may not know. I mean, this supposedly, that's teaching based on what you're supposedly had learned. So, even you got a couple of things there. Either we aren't teaching what the kids supposed to learn, or, excuse me, teaching what state standards are, or the kids really not learn. I know you're trying to say we're teaching to the test, and I hate teaching to the test. But it's supposed to be an indicator of what they know.
My, my question goes back to, to the
How are we gonna help them?
Are we gonna help them, and are we reteaching?
And that's, that's really
Are we taking the benchmark test?
That's the question that we really need to That's the question that we really need to be digging into. Because to your point, for example, if we are really focused on how the kids are doing, all the teachers in the building are focused on, where should these kids be, right? Instead of waiting until the end of the semester and finding out, or waiting until the first benchmark. So it should be a continuous process where the Algebra I teachers in our larger schools, our math teachers in our small schools, are talking about how is your students doing with this? And when they don't do well, remember we put the advisory period in, the high schools, that's what it's supposed to be used for. That 35 minutes is where kids are supposed to be going back.
You don't need to give them a whole semester worth with what I see there.
But, but that's a start. You see what I'm saying? And, and here's the other thing that block schedule helps you with. If I fail it this semester, I can take it next semester. You can, you have the ability to get a kid back into something, but they may have been close.
I mean, it's not like the end of course for English, Algebra I, Biology, and US History, those have been around for years. It's not like we don't know what's on those tests. I mean, it's, it's just, so it's...
What are we teaching?
So somewhere we're missing, there's some big instructional pieces that are gaps.
Some teachers who have pretty good track records of turning the students who are passing, and are they, should they be modeling those two to a week?
That's exactly right. They're the ones that should be doing the pacing guides and the model units. For the new teachers that are coming into the profession that aren't sure exactly how to do it, that's how you do it. That's, these groups that meet together on a weekly, bi-monthly, monthly basis, Ms. Thomas, that, that's what they should be doing, is helping each other, mapping it out, saying, here's what they really need to know, here's model units, right? Lesson plans for the units that they're teaching. If we can get consistent in buildings with that, and across the district, you start tagging what y'all are talking about. But if you, if you just assign, again, one of the thoughts is your best teachers aren't necessarily teaching your most needyest kids. And so, you know, you gotta really balance that in a school, because the longer teachers have been in the profession, and, and, and the more, and the better they do, they tend to teach the kids that are higher. When really, the kids that really need them are the ones that are struggling. So I like to see a balance between those two, if at all possible. Again, with the advisory period, they have the ability to go to a different teacher.
Which brings me, I mean, to your point of saying, well, you know, if you look at the English and the Algebra, that the middle school scores are higher, higher. That's an even greater tragedy than we're not teaching, I mean, the majority of our kids. Our majority of our kids are not the upper kids.
Well, they are in middle school.
Right, I, I'm saying that, but what I'm saying, but when they get to the high school, and those high school scores are so good, we're failing our, the majority of our kids.
But if you think...
Because our, because our, our smart kids are gonna make it regardless.
Right, 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 right. And if you think that the 1,200 kids that are at the middle school, you know...
There's 70 of them that take the class.
The brightest of the bright are making those high schools.
So I'm not, so, so, but I'm saying, now you got the, the rest of them have got to take it at the high school. And we need to be treating them as if they're our, our brightest of our bright, because that's the ones we, I, I just, I, I don't fall with the excuse of these are, well, these are our lower kids, so they're gonna...
Those kids, to bring them up to that level.
Okay, and I agree, I agree, but on the other hand, if, what are you doing to the superstar who you are challenging and giving? That we keep, I mean, it's always about, I hate to say it, we tend to teach down. We got to give every kid, no doubt about it, but to sit here and take all your so-called better teachers and take away from the kids who are superstars, as you call them, whatever they are, the smart kids, we aren't challenging them, we aren't excelling them, so we're failing. We're gonna fail one way or the other if we can't get them all. And right now, we're not...
I'm saying they have to balance.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's gotta be a balance.
I mean, high school teachers now are down. They're teaching four periods a day, or three periods a day, but they're, I mean, you could have a mix.
Yes.
You could, you could, you know, you're calling it balance, I'm out.
And so I, I think that's what this, the point this really brings home is, is that you gotta focus on the teachers that are showing trends that may not be getting the kids learning what they need to learn. And then you focus on the teachers with trends that are doing a really good job. And you try to give professional development to those teachers that have been struggling getting their kids to do well. You know, that's what we have to do now. We, we're in the midst of a teacher shortage. So you got, if, if you got a teacher that can relate to students, you gotta help them with the content, you gotta get them up to that point. You know, it's different if they can't relate to kids, then there's really nothing we can do to help them. But if they can relate to kids, have we done everything on our end to give them professional development, to help them to be better teachers? And we have to be able to answer yes to that. And I think today, we can't answer that. So I think that's a huge part of moving forward is professional development in the math content area, in the bio, in the, in the science content areas, specifically Biology, Chemistry. You know, we, we need to be talking specifics with our good teachers across the district and letting them lay the groundwork for what everybody else is doing.
I think, isn't that a decision at your local level, at your local school, where that administrator should know? And they, when they start assigning, doing their master's scheduling, then they decide how to put these kids in. And there's not gonna be a dramatic change overnight, but you need to realize that. It's not gonna happen next month.
That's right.
It's not gonna happen next year. It may take you three-year trend.
Well, and then that's what I said too. I thought, I said, well, this is awful. Well, so what? It is where it is right now. We can't go back and say what's happened, and that's what calmed me down the day when I spoke to him. I understand. I, I can't help it. It is where it is. We gotta, we gotta make a plan from here, yeah.
The other thing you gotta remember is, part of the reason we brought him here was to bring some unity and, and some consistency. Not some guidance to everybody. So you gotta allow time for that to happen.
I will agree with you, but I'm just, but the other thing I want to say is, we have now been, if you follow those trends, three or four years now, in a, in a negative trend, and those kids aren't getting that, those years back. So it's, I'm, yeah...
My kids, that's what I say, personally.
So it's, I agree, it's, we've got to give, but we can't have all the time in the world, because every year that goes by, we keep saying, oh, well, we've got to give them time, because we said this last year. We've got to give them time. That, that was the exact words out of y'all's mouth last year. We've got to give them time. We've got to get this turned this around. This is a new test. We've got to give it time. Y'all, these, these are real lives that we are dealing with, not just numbers on these things.
And you talk about learning something, we should have been teaching all along. We got good teachers. We, we should have been learning all along. To see what I saw right there, that scares me to death. Now, it might make you look real good in real short form, because that ain't the one way to go right now.
You realize though, when, when we moved before, we were way down there.
You were, you were right.
Before, we were where we are now, and it didn't happen in a year, it didn't happen in two years. I realize it's a loss of a child's year and all this kind of business, but at the same time, when, when we had some other administrators in here, that might be the kindest way to say it.
They've been gone for two years.
No, 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 that's not why. You're not listening to what I'm saying. I'm saying before, we had some previous administrators, prior to this superintendent and this superintendent this last, and we were way down there. And then we brought somebody in here before that beat the drum with the same stuff that was happening right here. But somewhere it fell off the map, because my philosophy was, I don't give a flying rip of rats behind about test stuff. And we were told that as a board, don't worry about that. And that's not my focus. So now we've got somebody in here that is disaggregating this stuff and figuring out how we need to make it happen. So, but I'm still saying, when somebody else came, they focused on the same kind of stuff. And that's how we built, we're doing that.
And, and I would say, everybody's right. It has to improve now. It has to, and it will automatically. It will improve. But to see the big change, it's gonna take a couple of years. But it's gotta improve now. I mean, we, we cannot afford to let it continue to slide, and so...
This trajectory is the wrong trajectory.
I'm, I'm confident today of what we've put in place, that we are starting to move in the right direction. But again, this is all new, you know, relatively new. We were doing this a few years back. It's relative, it's relatively new to the people that are new to the district now, and putting this in place. You got new principals now that are having to learn how to manage this in their buildings. But, but we're coaching them, and we're helping them, and they're helping each other as well, so...
And we got new teachers.
Correct. And, and that's changing on a year basis, unfortunately. So we know where we were. We don't want to slide anymore. We gotta make improvements. We gotta plan and move.
And I think the board has also said, we not gonna let these teachers that are not doing what they're supposed to do slide by.
Well, and, and this, this process, it magnifies that situation in the buildings. You, you can't hide from it. You know, if, if you're, if you're not doing what you need to do for kids, it shows up on a weekly basis in front of people instead of it not showing up until the end of the year.
And everybody needs to find another home.
Back to when you started talking about the reading in third grade. If the student coming in the first grade got issues on reading, there's three of them over there, what are we specifically doing for those three kids?
So there, there's several types of interventions that you can do, okay? And when I say interventions, how you help kids that aren't getting what everybody else is getting, or aren't up to the same place. Teachers are trained to work with small groups, especially in the younger grades. So, so they're trained to have pull-out small groups at different times during the class period, so they can start some students on a project or a particular, with iPads, they can be working on a particular project. They can have this group over here doing a reading assignment. And then they can take three kids and sit them in front of them at the down, you know, in front of the class with three kids and work with them, and, you know, intentionally on reading for those students that could be behind them. The other piece is interventionist. Interventionist, you hear about reading interventionist, that's people that are in schools, all they do is pull out students.
The reading coach.
Read, not coach. Coach teaches teachers how to be better at teaching reading, but the interventionist, that's what, they pull kids out and they teach kids. So, you know, the, the whole reading interventionist piece of our buildings, gotta make sure that that's set up, helping the kids that need it the most. So again, you're identifying these students that need that help. But you got interventionists to help the kids, you got reading coaches to help the teachers know the material better and how to teach better. And then you've got the groups of teachers meeting together saying, how, I'm the veteran teacher, how can I help you with this? What can I, what, you know, how can I help you plan this lesson differently? That's what you gotta have going on. And when everybody doing the same thing, you will move forward, but you gotta get everybody moving in the same direction.
But I just can't see that same student in 5K having issue reading. First grade had an issue reading, second grade had issue reading, now we at third grade, we paying it.
Well, that's a big problem we have right now.
Right, but the thing is, that should be fixed. I would say in, in a year, or either IAP or, or something to, to, to put more emphasis on it. It shouldn't go for four years.
But here, I was talking to somebody the other day about this, a couple of our principals. And they were talking about how a lot of their kids, more than they thought, were two years behind. And they just got to their school this year, right? So they're two years behind, and they're trying to figure out how are we supposed to get them to where grade level is? Well, y'all think about your own schooling and thinking about kids and nieces and nephews that have been around even once. Kids taste success, they take off. You gotta, you gotta get back to the point where a kid stopped being able to understand what was going on. You can't start them, i- if they're, if they're in fifth grade and they're reading on a third grade level, you can't expect them to be learning what all the other fifth graders are doing, right? And you can't really do it with fourth grade. You need to take them back to wherever it was that they have a comfort level. And wherever that comfort level is, you teach them there, but I promise you, they learn at a quicker pace that way. They learn quicker to catch up than learning it the first time. You see, because it, 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 it builds on itself and, and, and the child gets more confidence about what they're doing.
So if, if, if a child happened to reach the third grade and still have that issue, when you track that student through, well, now we're talking about reading teachers, right?
Yep.
Who, who takes, who take the hit?
That's good, that's what our third grade teachers ask us. They didn't come to me this way, but, but, but I gotta, I gotta help. I gotta help them. And so to, to me, it's obvious with, when, when you test students coming in, right, you know where they are. So, you know, if, if they come into you low, you can't blame the current year teacher for that.
Correct.
Now, what you hope is that they can catch them up as much as possible. They have to do some catching up, no matter what. That's the expectation. But more importantly, you go back to the lower grades and say, what are we missing? How are we missing? Again, not long ago, K through second grade, they didn't do a lot of testing, if any at all. They didn't even give grades a few years back, right? It hadn't been that long that, that, that they were even given grades at the, at the primary levels. So I think people realize that all of a sudden, all of our kids, you know, all of these kids can't read third, fourth, fifth grade. Well, you know where that's happening. First grade, kindergarten.
So the thing is, I, I think throughout the kind, I know I was very, you know, involved with it, to make sure we got a library in each one of these boroughs to, uh, uh, kids to read. But the point is, if you don't have that going on in the house...
Right.
What teacher, the teacher, it, it, it's not going on in the house.
Right.
Or some other, other, other way of doing it. It just, you know, it, it just not gonna work. And the thing is, you know, and I know that, that the parent got it on remote control, and it, it don't work that way.
If you go into some of these environments these kids live in, it's amazing they do as well. They do so well. I went to them last year, and it's, I mean, there's no way he's gonna be on a third grade level with a third grade. I mean, with what he has to go through at home. I mean, that's no excuse, but we gotta figure some way to get around this.
We do.
So, so if, if a child in the first grade having those kind of issues, between the teacher, the principal, and the social worker, whoever, they need to find out, go to, go to the, I mean, go to their house or something. Because if the environment is not conducive to learning and reading, it's not gonna happen.
Right, that's right.
The teacher can beat the head all day long.
Right, right. Well, and, and again, I will applaud Donington County School District for what you have done towards that. I know you all feel it's a struggle. Y'all, a lot of districts don't have social workers in their schools. A lot of districts don't have mental health counselors in their schools. You all put the, put the money behind those people being in the buildings, because that's addressing what we're talking about as far as these kids struggling in, in the environments.
We say it's addressing it, but isn't?
Well, think about what it'd be like if they weren't there.
We don't know, we don't know. I mean, I'm just sitting here saying, I mean...
It'd be a whole lot worse than...
I, I know you say that, and, and, and I, I believe you, I think. Uh, it's just that it, it, it's bad now, and we do have these people in place. I'm like, are we that much worse than those that don't have it? Meaning... Just from a point, you take a district that is more rural, worse than we are, not having it, they aren't much different than we are. They aren't performing much differently than we are. That's what concerns me. I know those people work, and I'm not saying that.
Trust me, you know, most of the people that are... Program to help preschool kids, but just getting them interested in going.
That's right.
And the parents taking them up there, because if they go in and let them pick a book out that they like, they have trouble under reading.
Well, and I, I mean, I, I've got ideas, y'all. I mean, we need to think out of the box. So for example, what about year-round school and pilot that in some of our most difficult buildings where the kids seem to be going backwards instead of forwards? I mean, we may need to talk about...
Where we, we brought, uh, PATE, where we have implemented this thing that we studied out in California, where we have this, um, mixed learning environment. I hear it's very successful. Brunson, I hear it's very successful, but no, we did it, we implemented, but no one's following up. It's like we need to implement for our other systems, so... I mean, we're building new schools.
We talked about year-round school with, what's that thing, Washington West.
Okay, but, but I'm saying, we're building three new schools, and we got one school over here. Well, is it before? Is that, is that working? Well, how are we designing our school? It isn't like this program, I mean, if it's working, why should we be designing that? We aren't utilizing what we already have. We keep putting things into their place, but we're not, we're not studying, we're not learning from it.
Well, and to me, I mean, the, I would choose to implement school-wide, not just a few teachers of grade levels. I would want to do school-wide. For example, if we said, let's try one of our buildings year-round, or two of our buildings year-round to see, and let parents sign up to be a part of that. Let them choose to be a part of that. Montessori, I mean, if you really want to hit our youngest, you know, with a different way of teaching them, you know, the Montessori method's another way of, of doing that.
So what I'm, I'm saying, we already have something in place. If you haven't read, know it's Brunson, is that where it is?
Brunson, Darwin.
Is it Brunson, the classroom, we got the one, two, and three, or what, two grades together in one?
Payton is first and second week.
That's one, Payton. I need you to go to Payton. I need you to go there, look and ask them. They got some awesome things, and they, these teachers are just overwhelmed with the success that they're having. Well, guys, we put in... Well, guys, we put it in place, why the study, it's something we need to do, but obviously, no one's going back to look at it. Again, we had a transition, so you may even know, know the project, or the, the program was in place. I, I, I ask you to go over there, talk to the principal, go talk to those teachers, what are they doing with their numbers, how are they progressing? They are loving it, and it's all different ranges of kids in the same two room building. So, why don't we implement this if it's working? If it's working there, then why are we trying to reinvent? We've already got it, we've been studying it. So, I just ask you to go look and talk, you may have something already in place, in addition to year-round school.
And it's my responsibility to tell you all what's working, and what isn't. So that, you all have tasked me with that. And so, I need to find the pockets of where that's happening, and need to come back to you and say, hey, this is working, let's do more of it. And I also need to be able to say, we need to do this new that we haven't done, because we need to try something. Again, I think we have to keep
That was a fault of ours, I think, because we didn't have associate superintendent, assistant superintendent, whatever. We had no one in place, I don't think, that was here when we put it in, so they're just running blind. They're loving it, enjoying it, but that success isn't being heard. So, a- again, not your fault.
And, and it goes back to, does the data support?
I think they're gathering two years of data, which isn't much, but it's two more than what we, you know, we need to help.
That's right.
Just to kind of pull us back to where this is, our numbers and such for this, you said that we, y'all were gonna be, you would have benchmarking, you've got math testing. Can we pull back with this at, in January, and let's see where, can you give us a report back on where we're making progress?
Can we, like, the first or second week of February?
That's fine, I mean, just when, when's the appropriate time? I mean, you just, but just somewhere mid along the way, I mean, I asked for this last year, and I got lots of pushback, but I think if you just kind of update us where we're going, that we know, I mean, I know we're trying to turn a, you know, a cruise ship around in a river. But, you know, we, we, at least get us damned in the river, I mean, something. I mean, I just think we need to, if you kind of can update us as to where you are, because you, you're, you're benchmarking it, you're, you're targeting, the teachers in that classroom should know where those kids are. This is, this should, these numbers should not be a surprise to us at the end of the, of the year.
Let me give you a few signs of, of success, and being, and positive.
Because this is all last year's, so
Last Friday, I was in a school, they were doing what they call their data team meetings, okay? And so, it was a grade level, it was fifth grade teachers all together. And they literally had all the information for the students that they had worked, they had a lesson plan, a model unit lesson plan based on the standards, they had been teaching it, they gave quizzes, they talked about it, and they were talking about the different kids' performance, and what could they do to get higher performance, and what students were doing well, and what students weren't doing well, and they were talking about all different, that, that hadn't been happening, y'all. We have not been on a continuous basis talking about what's working and what's not working. It's been, whatever takes me to get through the end of the day, that's what I need to do. And so, you know, now we're, we're having these discussions. I talked to, uh, parents, I talked to, uh, support personnel and other folks in these community meetings, the cabinet meetings over the past couple of weeks, and I explained to the parents what we're doing with these small groups of students, and, and, and making plans for students based off of those small groups, and how the students are performing. The parents are saying, I see something very different this year. I see information coming to me about how my student is performing, and what they're going to do now to help it. So there's signs already that, 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 that the organization and the consistency of talking about what's going on at the moment is taking place. So again, that's what you look for to start with, but, but it's starting, it is.
I, I, we just had You see the focus, now we, we, just, I think, industry-wide, we begin to see more focus.
And we just had eight days.
That's how you get parents to buy it.
That's right.
We all fly by the seat of our pants everywhere we go. But now everything's beginning to be focused, so the parents and the community will begin to focus.
Well, and, and the next step is to address, like, discipline issues in the buildings. You know, if, if, is that what's affecting student life? Okay, what are we doing in buildings, what are we doing as a district for discipline, for classroom management? These are all things, you, you get the organization put in place, and then you start stacking on all those other things that you can work on, and the whole system starts moving forward. So, you know, we've got a good start. Doggone if two storms didn't knock us off track, and put kids back to square one again, you know, trying to get them back ready for school. But, again, can't do anything about this, other than look at it and go, okay, that's what, that's what it was. And then for you all to look at me and say, okay, what are you gonna do about it, and then, and so, that's where we are.
One last question. Okay, if, um, if a student, you got an interim report card, halfway through their interim report card, it's going south, why can't they have, uh, 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 interim parent teacher coming, so, parent, I know that, face to face.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, right.
Should be, should be. You know, I, I'm big on, you know, for example, after-school programs that help kids with what's going on in school, instead of just being something that, that babysits or watches kids. I mean, I, I want to see after-school programs that, that focus in on everything that's going on in the building during the day, and teaching going on, not just a placeholder until parents can come get kids up. So, yeah, I mean, we, we, we need to be able to, my whole thing with, with community and interacting with parents is, first time they hear from us should not be when their student is failing.
Right, right, right.
You know, we should be talking to them way in advance and say, hey, I just want to tell you how your, your son or daughter, or, you know, granddaughter or grandson is doing, they did great on this particular unit that we were working on. Or, you know, I want you to come by and come in, I, you know, they did great for four grades, they slid on a couple of grades, can you come in and talk with me? Let's figure out what's going on. It should be constant communication.
But the majority of parents have talked, and the child favorite, they're gonna blame it on the teacher. And why, and that's not the case.
Well, and they, and, you know, if they don't hear about it until the end of the quarter, that could be why they blame it on the teacher. So we gotta make sure we're doing our part, you know, to say, here's what we're doing for your child. But then after that, we need support from the, from the home.
Right, sure.
All right, any other questions?
This kid doing high education, he'll find another job.
I've got my other two-hour presentation lined up, let me go ahead and pull that up here.
That's right. So like you said earlier
I'm just kidding.
See, see, we have not had someone like that.
I'm saying that, I'm saying that, that's my ace
Just, just FYI.
That's my ace in the hole, so
Back in Friday morning, work session.
I, nobody breakfasts dinner.
Do you have anybody to take the second? Kevin, I would be a jerk.